Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular school committee meeting this Wednesday, December 14th, 2022, at 7:08 PM. Please note that we are live streaming on our YouTube channel, and the recording will be available on our YouTube channel afterwards. Before we get started this evening, we do have a special treat. The Rainwater Players will sing the finale from their performance of Shrek.
There's a good spot for them with Sean Stacey. In front of the podium, maybe?
Yeah.
In front of the podium, or camera that way.
All the way.
Turn on the headphones. Turn on your arm up there. We're gonna make that. And then next round. Turn your bodies out just a little bit. Okay? Very good.
I waited all my life, lived it by the book. Now I know that's not my story. You take me as I am, love me as I look. Standing here in all my glory and sweetness. I'm a fatty, I'm a princess, I'm a fatty, I'm a mess of contradictions in a dress. I am saffy, I am saffy, but I'm with you, I am happy. This is our story. You laugh at all my jokes, even though they're crude. You don't mind that I'm not classy. We make a perfect pair, radiant and rude, so in love and much too gassy. We are okers, we are scary, we are donkeys, we are hairy, we are full and brand-new stories to be told. We will write them, we will tell them, you will hear them, you will smell them. This is our story.
And that is how an ogre came to live on the swamp with a beautiful princess.
And his best friend.
And his best friend.
And a gingerbread man.
And a burning candle puppet.
Three things.
And a ugly duckling.
And a witch.
And a fashion-obsessed wolf.
What makes us special? What makes us special? What makes us special? What makes us special makes us strong. We are witches, we are fairies, we are weirdos.
I'm hairy.
We're a giant witness sampler here to try. We are puppets, we are rabbits, we are hobbits with bad habits. We're a screwy but delighted crazy zoo. We are different and united. You are us, and we are you. This is our story. This is our story. This is our story.
God bless us, everyone!
What a perfect way to just kick off the holiday season. And just a little promotion, that Rainwater Players will be celebrating 35 years. And that will be on Saturday, January 7th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. General admission is $20, and the alternative date is Sunday, January 8th, at 6:00 PM. In case of snow, go to www.bridgethrain.org for updates. Tickets are now available at www.bridgethrain.org. Thank you so much. Now I would invite you to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to introduce our school committee members and administration in attendance this evening. On my left, I have Mr. Diemerino, Mrs. Martelli, Mrs. Conrad Labrento, Mr. Powers. On my, the acting superintendent, I'm sorry. On my right, I have Ro Hans Secky.
Sekri.
Sekri. Thank you, Secky. Sekri. I am co-chair of the Student Advisory Council, Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mrs. King, Mr. Dolan, Mr. Marrera, the vice chair, and I am Lillian Holbrook, the chair. We also have in attendance this evening, Ms. Kathy Macedo, the business manager, Michael Schontz, the IT director, Mrs. Judy McDougall, the recording secretary, and other members of the admin team are also in attendance. We are returning from executive session. I will now turn the meeting over to Mr. Dolan to discuss contract negotiations for the acting superintendent.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. As we all know, we voted to an addendum for Mr. Powers to serve as the acting superintendent back at our meeting in October. The addendum called for term that I will read and make a motion on. The current addendum reads, "The term of this addendum shall be for a period of September 21, 2022, until the superintendent of schools returns from his leave of absence, but in no event later than December 15, 2022." So, Madam Chair, in the form of a motion, I move to strike, "But in no event later than December 15, 2022," and in anticipation of Mr. Swenson's return, now slated for January 3rd, 2023, as he continues to use accrued time earned.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second. A second by Mrs. King. Any discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote. Mrs. Conrad Labrento?
Aye.
Mr. Diemerino?
Aye.
Mr. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Martelli?
Aye.
Mrs., Mr. Marrera?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, if I may, make a motion to take item 10(c) transportation five-year contract out of order, as Mr. Labrie is here, and we would like to be able to send him on his way earlier than our budget subcommittee report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Go ahead, yeah, absolutely, Rich and Kathy. I'll just read my report before we begin. That's all right. Just so everyone knows, the Budget Subcommittee did hear, did have Mr. Labrie and Mrs. Macedo at our last meeting, where Mrs. Macedo reintroduced Mr. Labrie, who has been the district's transportation bid consultant for several, several years. Mr. Labrie informed the committee that there is a driver shortage nationwide, as the retired individuals who normally serve in those positions are not willing to do so any longer in a post-COVID world, and that trucking companies, we all know the big trucking companies and large box organizations, offer more appealing employment packages, and no longer have, the drivers don't have to work split shifts, much like our, our school bus drivers, and they're guaranteed overtime around the holidays. Mr. Labrie informed us, informed the Subcommittee, I should say, that an 8.7% increase to the prevailing wage is expected for regular bus drivers, and the van drivers already has gone up 25%. Add a $3-an-hour increase in health insurance and other benefits, significant increases to the cost of transportation are expected for this coming contract. So, Mr. Labrie, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Thank you for the, for the introduction. As, as you heard, there's been a chronic driver shortage for the last, at least the last three years. Some of it due to COVID, some of it just due to the, to the economy and the need for truck drivers. And consequently, what happens is that, as trucking companies and as the private sector looks for drivers, they can offer higher wages and greater benefits that typically school districts are able to absorb in their contracts. It's made, made life difficult for school districts. Most school districts that I'm aware of have been struggling on the service performance side for the last two years, because, primarily because of the shortage of drivers and the need to combine routes and consolidate routes, and there's a high level of frustration everywhere as a result of that, not only with parents, but of administrators, and certainly from contractors also, who, who want to perform, and they want to do a good job. Having said that, we put together the, the new bid specs. There are several changes in this version from what we had in 2017, not least of which is that the biggest concern was that your, your previous contract or your current contract that is ending was based on a first-year cost award and then a COLA increment each year thereafter. I've recommended that we go with a straight five-year contract, with the bidder giving us the price for each of those five years. The reason being is that COLA right now is very unpredictable looking forward. COLA right now was about 7.5% two months ago, it's inching up to about 8.1% now, probably going to be close to 8.5% by the end of the year, and with an impending continued inflation and a possible recession, that COLA could, could go even higher. And I think it's much more important to get a fixed-price contract at this point, so that you know what the cost will be each year going, going forward. I've recommended a straight five-year, the reason being is you want to minimize your initial cost per day per bus, and when the contractors and the bidders can amortize their fixed cost over five years, as opposed to if you do a three-plus-two, they'll advertise it over three years that they're, that they're guaranteed in the contract, and the cost would be, would be less going five years. The other change that we made is we improved the language with regard to the age of the buses, and we're requiring no bus to be older than five years at the start of the contract, no older than 10 during the contract. What that means is that wherever the successful bidder is, will be able to use that fleet of buses through the whole contract for the whole, whole five years, and you won't see a blip in the cost because of having to replace equipment during, during the contract. And so you're more likely to get a, a more level of year-to-year cost increase that way. The other is that recognizing some of the issues you've had this year when we first came in, we've increased the language and changed the language with regard to including chronic underperformance as a category for either elimination of the contract, or being the access to performance bond as a penalty for what we call chronic underperformance. I will say that every contractor that I'm aware of has had performance issues primarily because of the shortage of drivers. In this case, there were also some comments with regard to customer relations with the contractor, or at least with some of the, the staff belonging to the contractor. We've increased included language there, where the, the manager can be removed for failure to provide satisfactory customer service. And what that means is, not that the contractor's going to fire anybody, but they would have to at least give you a manager that, that is successful for, for this district and for the administrators to work with. And we all understand the frustration that we all have, you know, as a result of drivers, but those should not be cast on to the, you know, to whoever is on the phone at the time. There was a correction that we made in the, in the, in the bid form itself, it's on page 38, it was a numbering sequence of the paragraphs. For some reason, paragraph 26 got repeated twice. That will be corrected in the, in the final draft before it's sent, before it's sent out. The other change we will make is, Ms. Macedo is retiring at the end of December, and therefore we will add Tola's email address and phone number as a contact after December 31st to the bid spec as a contact. All requests for bid specs come directly to the district, they'll pass them on to me, and then I will keep the bid log and, and send everything out electronically. And that seems to have worked pretty well. As you know, I said to expect a healthy increase the first year, primarily because of what's going on with the prevailing wages. The Teamsters have made a big inroad in the last four or five years with contractors. Because of driver shortage, they have a lot of leverage against the contractors with regard to negotiating driver wages and increases, and Lucini Bus is, is not exempt from that. And Mr. Lucini told me Thursday night that his union had ratified a contract. We don't have it yet, because they haven't, they haven't signed it yet, but we will have it prior to the issuing of the bid specification, and we will include that collective bargaining agreement with the, with the specifications. The reason being that any bidder is most likely going to have to recognize the Teamsters and adopt that collective bargaining agreement. So regardless of who it is, unless it's a non-union company that comes into bid, in order to get drivers and get the incumbent drivers, they're going to have to deal with the, in all practicality, they're going to have to deal with the Teamsters. And so regardless of which company comes in as a successful bidder, you can expect to see that same increase in wages and benefits in that reflected in their bid. Those are primarily the, the changes that we've made. We've, we've improved some of the language as a result of monitoring what's happened in the inspector general's office with bid protests and our own experience. This, this bid specification has been a publication in the making for over 12 years. We improve it every year as, as we, as we need to and as we garner more experience. I do expect competition for this contract. The reason being is that there is a large contractor who lost two contracts in the area and has a number of buses that they'd love to put in service, whether here or someplace else, but they are looking for a contract to land buses and drivers. So I do expect competition, which in our case is, is a good thing. I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you might have.
Madam Chair, I, after speaking to Mr. Labrie during our meeting, I am grateful for the work he's done so far, but also want to highlight that locking in the price for five years and knowing what that price is for each year of the contract from a budget standpoint for us is huge, and then to be able to pass that on to the town so they can plan appropriately for one of our largest line items, I think is going to be, is going to benefit everyone.
I agree. One, one other comment. You know that over the last two years, that because the legislature was flush with money, your reimbursement rate under chapter 71 was relatively high, really out-of-normal high, 95 and 96.2%, I believe, over the last two years. We've been advised by the Department of Ed that the likelihood of seeing more than 80% reimbursement is not good going forward. So I said to Mrs. Macedo, I said, "When you, when you start looking at your next year's contract, be prepared to see something in the neighborhood of 80% reimbursement," as opposed to 95% reimbursement.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, I, I never missed a chance to meet up on our legislature about funding us at 100% for regional transportation like the state has promised to do for regional school districts, and they should, especially because everybody, almost everybody, I should say in this room, got money back from the Commonwealth, because they were flush with cash. They said, "You were jacked right to your house and said, 'Here's money, we don't need it.'" "We need it, we need it here at Weare, every regional school district needs it." And then in November, we passed question one, which is, as I recall, devoted to education, which could include transportation, which that should be devoted to regional transportation. That's just my soapbox speech. But my real question about the contract are, you, you've mentioned two things. One was chronic underperformance, and the second was poor customer service. Forgive me if I got the words a little bit wrong. Is it in our sole discretion, how is that going to be determined as to whether those things are fair?
It's actually, it's actually at your discretion. For chronic underperformance, typically you, you need to, the process is, when you see chronic underperformance, it has to be noted. I mean, keep a log if you, if you have to. After 30 days, you notify the contractor of chronic underperformance, they have 30 days in which to fix what's called a defect. If they don't fix it within that defect, then you move on to the next step, which would be to notify their bonding company of under, underperformance, and then you look at establishing what the financial damages are as a result of that. One of the financial damages would be for the district to hire drivers to put in those buses, because you could pay more than the collective bargaining agreement calls for, and use the performance bond money to pay for it.
And is there a, is it, I got two further questions, I'm sorry, just to get them off the table. Just following up on those, is there a limit to how much we can get back as far as if the contractor performs poorly?
100%, 100% of the contract is the maximum you could get.
So we, we could get, we could get it for free?
If you could find somebody to do it.
No, I mean, no, you said you could get 100% back, if that's what we're asking.
Well, say if, say it's a two, it's a $2 million contract for each year. If you were to terminate the contract and file for performance, you would get back your $2 million, which you would then use to acquire the service from somewhere, someone else.
Right.
The likelihood of getting that service for $2 million from someone else is not...
Yeah, yeah, that's, I, I just wanted to know what the limit was.
Although, I will say that, it is the discretion of the school committee to reduce the performance bond from 100% to something less. But I always advise the school committee in the first year of contract to require 100% performance bond, keep their feet to the fire, that's the leverage and the threat that you have. If performance is good going forward, then to save a few thousand dollars, you might want to consider reducing the performance bond to 50% or something like that, but I always recommend 100% performance bond, at least in the first year of the contract.
Thank you. And then just the last thing from me.
Managerial, you know, if there are issues, again, that's solely at the discretion, in this case, solely at the discretion of administration, because they're the ones who deal with the, with the managers that they're on, on a daily basis.
Thank you.
And I would say that it, it, from a standpoint of good practice, it would have to be more than a single incident. And again, if it's, if you have an incident, you notify the, the contractor, you can do it in verbally the first time, but typically, once you do it in writing, they have 30 days to, to fix the defect. If not, then you consider what the next step would be.
Thank you. And then my last question, I know this is to you, and just a recommendation to the folks negotiating on our behalf, is let's not forget the vans and especially the special ed students who move between towns and sometimes have well-over-hour rides, for a ride that should take half an hour, I mean, you know, straight down and extending it really long enough. So let's just make sure we're covering them, making sure that they're performing on that level as well.
FERCPA actually required, and DESI policy is that for special ed students, the transportation is going to take six, more than 60 minutes, the parents have to approve that as part of the IEP process. Because there are places that, that you would be sending students, not because of the distance, but because of traffic considerations, especially if they're going into Boston, where they could be, the time could be 60 minutes or more, even though it's not a, a great distance, so.
Right, thank you.
But does require parental approval.
Anyone else have any questions?
Madam Chair, if I could, one thing that Mr. Labrie is recommending is a five-year contract, and per Mass General Law, we have to approve going out to a five-year contract. So with a motion, he would, to authorize the Director of Business Services to publish bid specifications to offer a five-year contract for transportation for, I'm sorry, let me read that again, to authorize the Director of Business Services to publish bid specifications to offer a five-year transportation contract.
We have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Marrera. Any discussion?
Mr. Dolan, I have some questions. Will this bid be issued on compays, or will it be...
It's advertised in goods and services and on compays.
On compays, okay, that's what I was just...
Correct. As well as your local newspaper?
Yep.
And then the legal notice has to be posted on the bulletin board of each town.
Okay, great.
And, and the school bulletin board.
Great.
And if you publish bids on your, on your website, or if the town typically does it on their website, it goes on the website also. Yeah, we do as much advertising as we can. Plus, I have a, an automatic bidder's list of about 35 companies that have asked for any bid that I do anywhere in the world. Most of them are just fishing expeditions, but every once in a while, you get somebody who's at least interested, and will come to the bidders meeting to, to look around the table and see who my, who their competition might be, and then make a choice as to whether they'll, they'll bid or not.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any changes that we make subsequent to this, we'll make by addendum. We have until three days before the bid opening in the middle of January to make changes. So if during the course of your deliberations, you have suggestions for changes, just let, well, before the end of December, let Kathy know, after that, let Tola know, they'll let me know, and we can issue an addendum. There'll be at least one, because after the bidders meeting, we will answer every question by, by written addendum. Even though the bidders meetings are not mandatory, we do that so that people can't come to the bidders meeting and know exactly who their competition will be. There's always the possibility that someone will come in who's not at the bidders meeting, and that's why we do everything by written addendum. It's about as level of play for you as we can, as we can try. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda, we have correspondence and recognition, and community emails and correspondences. Each month, I will continue to report on emails and correspondences from members of the school community. This month, the school committee received emails ranging in topic to include an email from Ms. Freeman expressing her gratitude for inviting the cheerleaders and herself to the school committee meeting, an email of a new study that shows youth marijuana use increases after legalization, an email regarding incorporating sexual education curriculum into the student success plan. Next, we have recognition of our Director of Business Services.
She just walked her child.
Just walked her child. Are you serious?
Absolutely, we want to recognize her.
Just walked her child. She saw the attention. Okay, we'll come back, we'll go on to letter of recognition, Mr. Powers.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to share, we received a wonderful parent letter not too long ago, recognizing this Casey Rodriguez, one of our high school teachers, and anytime we can share good news about our teaching staff, we always like to report out on that. out on that. With your permission, Madam Chair, I'd just like to read a few lines from that parent's letter, if that is okay.
Yes.
I'm just writing to let you know how lucky Bridgewater-Rehnham is to have Ms. Rodriguez. Her commitment and love for her students is so obvious. Ms. Rodriguez has impressed me from the very first day I met her. I love her enthusiasm and the way she approaches and interacts with my son and the other students in her class. So it just, it was wonderful to read that full letter, and I just want to say thank you, congratulations to Ms. Rodriguez, if she's out there watching. And again, obviously, anytime we can share that great news, we'd love to highlight our wonderful teaching staff.
Yes, it's always nice to recognize the hard work and dedication of our teachers, so thank you. Okay, now, we will recognize our Director of Business Services, Ms. Kathleen Macedo. Kathy, over the past last fourteen years, you have been a tremendous asset to the Bridgewater-Rehnham District. Our district was always in good hands with you. You were always patient and sensitive to our needs and the needs of the two towns. In good financial years and in trying financial years, you always found ways to save us money. Your loyalty and dedication to our district has proven again and again. Your career has been a model to follow. I count the times school committee members, myself included, have come into your office asking for clarification or offered possible solutions, and you always listened and gave us your honest opinion. Our district would not be the success it is today if it were not for your hard work and dedication of people like you. On behalf of the school committee, we would like to thank you with a small token of appreciation. Thank you. Thanks, Kathy. Okay, next, we have senior class blanket donation, Mr. Powers.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I, again, just love sharing the good news of our students. Ms. Rucker and Ms. Littlefield, two of our high school teachers, who are also senior class advisors, along with the senior class members, organized a blanket drive, and they collected blankets and actually delivered them to a homeless shelter over in Middleborough. So we're, again, just the thoughtfulness of our students to be able to do that. They got immediate feedback from the homeless shelter that their delivery was timely in that the homeless shelter actually didn't have any blankets yet for the winter. So they were more than grateful to receive those, and I just wanted to, again, recognize our seniors that contributed to that, or anyone really that contributed to that, but certainly our senior members that went over and delivered those to the homeless shelter.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. That was a wonderful senior class project, and raising monies for blankets and delivering them to a shelter in Middleborough, what a fine example of how we can all pull together and really help others in need. So wonderful. Next, we have MMEA Southeastern Junior Districts Festival, Mr. Deanna Marino.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Recently, we had three students audition for the Southeastern Massachusetts Music Educators Association Junior Festival, two of which were selected to perform, Jaylen Lee and Sophia Senna. Also, on November nineteenth, we had sixteen members of our band audition for the senior districts, with six being selected to the festival, Jeremy Chapman, Fabricio Vega, Jonathan Furmanek, Braden Hackett, Kaden McNally, and Dominic Senna. Four of these students also received All-State Recommendation with an invitation to audition to play at Symphony Hall. Those members are Jonathan Furmanek, Braden Hackett, Kaden McNally, and Dominic Senna. Congratulations.
Have you got anything to add?
I do, obviously, you know, we're all, I know I echo those comments of you, Deanna Marino, how proud we are of our students, especially our marching band. I do want to share something about the marching band. This past weekend, I had strict instructions to be home between ten and eleven a.m., and I wasn't sure why, but I was told I could not leave. And what a pleasant surprise, members of the high school marching band were out and about delivering Christmas cheer and holiday cheer to members of the community, and they took it upon themselves to stop by my house. So I had a quick driveway concert, they played Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer, and delivered some cookies, which are almost gone. So I just wanted to, again, thank them for their thoughtfulness, not just at my house, but I know the neighbors and all those that received that treat were very, I appreciate it.
Wonderful, thank you. And this concludes the correspondence and recognition. Next on our agenda, we have public comment. The school committee welcomes information, concerns, and opinions from those attending the meeting. In order to give those wishing an opportunity to speak, ensure compliance with open meeting law and other legal obligations, and avoid disruption of the meeting, the committee will not engage with the speaker or with one another in deliberation on comments as they are presented during comment periods. At its discretion, the committee may schedule issues raised by a speaker for deliberation at a future meeting. If you would like a personal response, please email the committee or Mr. Powers directly following the meeting. The chair will now open up public comment for a period of twelve minutes per policy VEDH, and would ask anyone who wishes to speak to please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and respectfully ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. When your three minutes are up and you still have not finished, I will ask that you submit your thoughts or script to our recording secretary, Mrs. McDougall, and she will distribute it to the committee for our review. So at...
Seven forty-five.
Thank you. Public comment at seven forty-five p.m. Anyone wish to address the school committee? No one? Okay, I will close public comment at seven forty-six. Okay, next on our agenda is the action items, the consent agenda. Approval of minutes dated November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, approval of general ledger warrants dated November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, and December third, twenty-twenty-two. Acceptance of gifts and grants, a thousand dollars to RMS for a new P.A. system from Mr. James Ingrolia, Global Montello Group, four hundred and thirty-five dollars to RMS, Cape Cod Five Educational Mini Grant for four hundred and ninety-six dollars to La Liberty, and a twenty-five-hundred-dollar Financial Education Innovation Fund Grant to fund credit for light fare. So I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next on our agenda, we have educational reports. Student Advisory Report, Mrs. King.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, we have the Student Advisory Council Report of December fourteenth. We have Mr. Sekri here today as our co-chair at the table. Would you like to go first?
Hi, everyone. Another one of them. There you go. I'm Rohan Sekri, for the people that don't know. I'm also a part of the school committee, the management of members. So this month, I also want to, before I begin, I want to touch on Mr. Powers in recognizing the senior class. Definitely, that gift to the shelters as well as the class officers going out, it really did mean to us a lot, giving back to the community, especially as seniors were departing, this is kind of our last goodbye, almost. It's definitely, it means a lot to me to give back to underrepresented communities. So thank you for recognizing us and them. So now, to my blurb, this month, I'm going to be speaking on Ms. Beach's involvement with BR. And this month, Ms. Beach, who is one of the assistant principals at BR, as all of you may know, has a separate group of students that are known as student leaders. These are kind of students that are selected or kind of nominated from teachers that represent our community very well, and really show presence in our school. These leaders are nominated by teachers, as I said, and recently, many of these students as well as kind of staff as well, participated in going to RMS as well as BMS. RMS specifically, I had went to, so I'm talking about RMS, this trip. It was on November thirtieth to give presentations on incoming freshmen for the next school year. We had discussed various topics surrounding high school life, clubs, which I'm very thorough, courses to take, and many more. Definitely, this is a key part, and I remember it as well, as being an eighth grader, being like, ooh, I want to go to high school. And this was kind of a big step for me to go to BR as well. So definitely, this is a really important discussion for most eighth graders. And so students at RMS were really engaged, there was even a worm dance as well with Mr. Ferrera, very, very memorable, I will never forget, because I sit every day in his class and I always remind him. And so I'm, you know, pretty cool to see the students also participate in that. And it was truly a great experience, definitely with Ms. Beach, and definitely helped with other staff and students. It definitely was really fun to do it as well, and kind of speak on what's going on in the school. So definitely want to report on that this month. And next time, I'm going to go off to Emerson.
Sorry, Rohan, I didn't know you already left the paper. Sorry. Okay, I'm going to put this down because it's a little late. Hello, everyone. So let me talk about NHS. During this upcoming holiday season, the National Honor Society has partnered up with Toys for Tots to help collect donations for children in need. Donation boxes are set up in all the English classrooms, as well as in the guidance office, for students to drop off unwrapped and unused toys. Please help make a child's holiday season one to remember. NHS is also putting on Ugly Sweater Day on December sixteenth. Students will have to pay one dollar and they get to wear a funny, ugly, or weird holiday sweater for the entirety of the school day. And all the money from Ugly Sweater Day will also go to Toys for Tots. Please support the National Honor Society in their effort to make this a memorable holiday season. And Danny unfortunately isn't here, so I'll be reading for her tonight. Last Friday, the Drama Club hosted our fall production, The Detective Club Murder, a dinner theater event. The audience was introduced to our murder suspects in the first act, and then was given a delicious dinner of spaghetti meatballs. Shortly after dinner, the guests had a chance to interrogate each murder suspect in order to make their assumptions on who was the murderer. The night was a success, and everyone had an amazing time. And next up is no one.
On December first, our school launched the Second Annual Schoolwide Key Tree Event, where each student is given three key tree dollars, where they can use in Room B-124 to buy gifts for their loved ones. Leading up, Mrs. Kendall, who's in charge of the whole event, has been collecting slightly-used or new items for anyone willing to donate in hopes of them finding a new use in another home. The community's been very generous with their donations, people have even donated fourteen-karat gold and sterling silver jewelry. Although it will be closing within the next few weeks, the key tree gives a great outlet for those who cannot afford gifts for their own families and allows them to spread holiday joy.
Good evening. I hope everyone is doing well tonight. Over the past few weeks, there have been two rehearsals so far for the thirty-fifth anniversary show for the Rainwater Organization, which I happen to take place in. The students, alumni, and I have been working to put on a show that briefly sums up the past thirty-five years of shows and students that have come and go through the program. There is a variety of dancing, acting, and singing that will be viewed at the performance coming in January. The exact date is January seventh, and the rain date is January eighth. Thank you for your time, and I'd like to welcome Rachel Corey to the podium.
The DECA Club successfully held a cupcake fundraiser, raising over one thousand dollars. Throughout the month of November, DECA members, including myself, collected orders for cupcakes that were sold for twenty dollars each pack of six. We profited six dollars for each pack sold. All profits will fund our competitions, which are occurring the first week of the new year. Additionally, I organized a blanket donation event, where students and staff at BR can donate gently-used blankets to be given to people in need, similar to what Rohan and the seniors did. All donations will be going to our Daily Bread Kitchen in Taunton during their annual Christmas event, and I hope that this donation event can help, even if it's in a small way. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want to say thank you to the Student Advisory Council for their report this month. Also, I did speak with Mr. Sekri and Ms. Schaws at the TJ auction, which we had no TJ update.
I couldn't speak on it. If you want, if you want.
So I went to the auction, my daughter is a freshman on the team, they raised a lot of money. It was a really great event, I was so impressed by the event. But I did speak with Mr. Sekri and Ms. Schaws at the event about how to incorporate the Student Advisory Council, how to make them feel comfortable speaking during meetings, when to bring up certain topics. So they told me their meeting dates, so I'm going to go to a future date, maybe in January, and do maybe a training with them, or answer some questions on a more informed way, just so they can figure out how they can be more incorporated into the meetings as well.
Wonderful, thank you.
And I just want to say, happy holidays to all of you, and thank you so much. So enjoy your break, and that concludes our report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
I'd just say, Mrs. King, if you'd like somebody to accompany you there, I'd be more than happy to come along and offer my perspective too. I think the Student Advisory Council is a great organization.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have administrative and school committee reports, and first we have our report of the acting superintendent, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. I would like to start by giving you this past month's personnel report. We did have twenty personnel actions during this past month, including nine new hires, four leave of absences, three resignations, three reassignments, and one separation. I would also like to announce that we have hired a new human resources director, Director of Human Resources, Ms. Nicole Healy. Ms. Healy comes to us from the Quincy Public Schools, where she was working in human resources. She actually spent the day today in the district. Mrs. Barry and I did the tour, introduced her to our administrative staff, and she actually met with several central office administrators as well. She will officially start on January third after the holiday. And I'm also pleased to announce that Ms. Tala Babalola has been appointed the interim Director of Business Services. Tala has worked in the district for the past nine years. Prior to that, she is a Bentley College, now Bentley University graduate, although I'm a Stoneville grad, so there's a little bit of rivalry there, but we're going to put that past us. And she worked in the accounting and finance field prior to coming to Bridgewater-Rehnham. She is a certified school business administrator, and we are so fortunate to have an internal candidate to take over for Kathy, which she does retire. Very much looking forward to working with Tala. I know she's going to do a great job for us, and obviously Kathy is spending, Kathy and Tala have been working very closely together over the last month or so, and there'll be no drop-off, I'm very confident in that. So thank you, congratulations. And that concludes my personnel report.
Next, we have the student success plan.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. I just wanted to provide you a brief update, since the last time I spoke about our student success plan and our path to excellence. As you know, we had laid out a timeline of implementation and plan development, and we had originally stated that we were going to spend November and December, and now parts of January, getting input and feedback from our stakeholders, our stakeholders being our students, staff, and families. So I just wanted to share some brief information regarding that. We actually started off with surveys out to our families, and to our students, students at the middle school level and at the high school level. Pleased to announce...
Next, we have the student success plan.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. I just wanted to provide you a brief update, since the last time I spoke about our student success plan and our path to excellence. As you know, we had laid out a timeline of implementation and plan development, and we had originally stated that we were going to spend November and December, and now parts of January, getting input and feedback from our stakeholders, our stakeholders being our students, staff, and families. So I just wanted to share some brief information regarding that. We actually started off with surveys out to our families, into our students, students at the middle school level and at the high school level. Pleased to announce that we received from our student population 1,751 responses from our students completing the survey. From our family side, we had 277 families respond to the survey. In addition to that, we also reached out to 52 parents to participate in focus groups. Those 52 parents represented approximately 199, but 100 students in our district. Again, those came from all levels, from preschool all the way up through high school. They included, you know, represented our student population. We had families with students on IEPs. We actually included families that had left the district. We had families of color. We had families of English learner status. So we really felt as though, in working with the building principals, when we asked them to identify some parents that we could meet with as part of this process, they really did an excellent job in identifying parents that represented our district. And then we also held, so we held two parent information nights for our stakeholders. We so appreciate the feedback that they provided us. And again, these, you know, we knew going in that these were not going to be feel-good sessions, nor did we want them to be. You know, I didn't reach out to my neighbor across the street and say, come tell us how great we're doing. We reached out to parents that, you know, really provide a different and unique perspective, parents that haven't always been satisfied with the education at Bridgewater- Rainham. As I mentioned, we included a parent that chose to, you know, have their child leave the district. We included parents that had filed PRS complaints on us. We really, you know, we knew going in we were going to get feedback that was going to be honest and candid and bold at times, and we so appreciated that, because getting that feedback is only going to make us better. And along those same lines, we also met with focus groups of students. So we met with students at Bridgewater Middle School, Rainham Middle School, and at the high school. We met with 46 students combined. Again, you know, and I shared this with the students, and I think members of my team that joined us, best part of our day, being able to sit down with students and actually hear about their experiences within the district. And we asked them, you know, questions about teaching and learning, you know, their experiences with, you know, the new resources we're rolling out, experiences with challenging opportunities. But we also talked to them about, you know, the social-emotional aspects of their education and, you know, having the connections with adults, do they feel like they're connected? And that was so great to hear, that, you know, almost all students, and not all students, but almost all students felt as though that they had a connection with at least a current teacher, a former teacher, somebody that they felt like they could go to. So we're in this, you know, in the process now of taking all that feedback. We have one more stakeholder group to meet with, and that's our staff. So we plan to do that, just the timing of it, early January, beginning to middle to January. As soon as we get back, we're meeting with staff members at a faculty meeting. We have an early release date coming up in January as well. We're also going to, you know, capitalize on that time to meet. So we'll take all that feedback and begin to use it to help develop our plan as we go forward through the winter and early spring. So I just, again, wanted to, you know, provide you a quick update on that. You know, we use that feedback and other data sources to develop our next student success plan. But so far, the process has been great. We've, like I said, received really, really good feedback, both through the surveys and with our stakeholder groups.
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
And Madam Chair, if I may, one more. I did want to share, I know Rohan spoke a little bit about it, and I know Ms. Watson's coming in January for a couple of agenda items, and she's also going to speak a little bit more on this. But Ms. Watson and her team, Ms. Beach, did go down along with students to the middle schools, just to highlight all the wonderful things that happened here at the high school. You obviously heard they shared about the academics, they talked about the clubs, the athletics. So they did go down to Rainham Middle School on November 30th. They went down to Bridgewater Middle School on December 8th. And they actually have two high school visits already scheduled for January. So the Bridgewater Middle School students are tentatively scheduled right now for January 17th, and the Rainham Middle School students are tentatively scheduled for January 18th. And I know Ms. Watson, again, will share more, because I think our school committee is shortly thereafter, so she'll have more information to share. But we're doing a great job, not just because Mr. Ferrera did the worm, but I do have to say, though, the kids talked about that. We actually asked some of the students about the presentation, what they thought of it, and that was the very first thing they talked about. So it did make an impression, and Mr. Ferrera always does.
Okay, does anyone from the committee have any questions for Mr. Powers?
Yes. Not a question, but just a comment or some feedback. I will say, I appreciate the focus groups and the planning that's gone into the student success plan. I've heard from families that participated and from families that have students participating, and I felt that, again, similar to what you said, the sessions were, they were honest, they were transparent, and appreciated the conversation, even with the parents of the students. And I also say, I also have an eighth grader that, in the RMS, that high school students visited, but I also heard from parents at Bridgewater about the visits, and both very, very positive feedback about those visits, and very excited eighth graders to come to the high school.
Great, thank you for sharing.
Wonderful. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Next, we have long-range planning, Mrs. Conrad Laberinto. But before I turn the meeting over to Mrs. Conrad Laberinto, I will entertain a motion to take the following two items from 10C, the capital plan and technology plan, out of order.
So, second.
We have a motion by Mr. Fitzgibbons, a second by Mr. Marrera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Mrs. Conrad Laberinto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On December 12th, at 5:30, the Long Range Planning Committee met to review the 10-year capital improvement plan and the five-year informational technology capital plan. Committee members present at the meeting were Mrs. King, Ms. Martelli, and myself, also in attendance, Mr. Powers, Mr. Kilgore, Mr. Schantz, and Mrs. McDougall. In the meeting, Mr. Kilgore presented the 10-year capital improvement plan with a detailed list of capital project needs for each school of the district. School committee members can find the copy of that report in your school committee folder. It's important to note that the plan is anticipative capital projects with the estimated cost for each year. However, school committee members should note that, again, projects could change and they could be, we could be forced to move them up sooner, depending on, you know, if things, building futures fail, or there's some changes that happen. And also that some of these items may be pushed out later because of, again, successful preventative maintenance that extend the life. And for instance, Mr. Kilgore's team, I think there was one fix that his team did for $100 that we had to replace. I think it was maybe $75,000 or something. But they were able to, it was on the plan, but he was able to fix it for $100 versus $75,000. So that was fabulous. In addition, there were items, there are some items on the capital budget that are safety items, for instance, security trap at RMS. And depending on potential security funds that we get from the state, there may be, those may be covered from that fund, from those funds, but we don't know what those funds will be or when we will get those funds. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 10-year capital improvement plan that Mr. Kilgore presented to the Long Range Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Laberinto, we have a second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
At the second part of the meeting, Mr. Schantz presented the five-year information technology plan report, can also be found in the school committee folder. Because of grant funding that we have received over the years, many projects that need to be completed in the next five years have been fast-tracked or already completed or in the process of completing. The good news is that due to this, there's a reduced number of major technology needs in upcoming years. In addition to the information, in addition to the capital improvement plan, there are some safety items also in the technology funds that may be covered by additional security funds, particular upgraded camera systems. But again, we will not know whether those funds, that those type of things will be funded through state level until we hear more about that. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the five-year information technology capital plan Mr. Schantz presented to the Long Range Committee.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Conrad Laberinto, second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
And just to finish, I just will say, as a committee, I'd like to thank Mr. Kilgore and Mr. Schantz for their plans, for their detailed plans to allow us to come to move forward and be able to move smoothly through those plans.
Thank you, Mrs. Conrad Laberinto. And I echo those sentiments also. Mr. Schantz, Mr. Kilgore, thank you for everything that you're doing to continue to make this district move forward. Next on our agenda, we have budget subcommittee, Mr. Dolan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On December 12th, Monday, we met at 6:30 PM in the superintendent's conference room. Mr. Marrera, Ms. King, yourself, Madam Chair, and myself were there in attendance. Also, we had Mr. Powers, Ms. Macedo, Mr. Kilgore, Ms. Robichaud, Ms., I'm going to say it wrong, Ryan, I need to apologize.
Babalola.
Bab.
Babalola.
Bab, nope.
Babalola.
Tola, sorry, Tola. It's going to take me a little bit, I apologize. Ms. McDougall and Mr. Labrie are transportation bid facilitators. The first item we discussed was the track and tennis court update. Preliminary plans were submitted, however, Mr. Kilgore did not approve those plans because of the placement of the long jump. New plans are in the works and will be submitted to him. The finalization of the tennis courts continues, and we are about a month behind now with the plan redesign issue. And we will, unfortunately, that does impact our timeline for the track being completed. However, it will not affect the season, as we already knew we would not be using the field for the season, or, I'm sorry, the track for the season. Substitutes, we did have a discussion about the substitute rates, and at this time, we have decided to make no recommendations. The Mitchell School monthly update, Mr. Powers provided an update on the lighting controls, and the vendor will be on site to correct the programming issues. Some aspects of the security system are also being reprogrammed to better serve the needs of the building. Finally, the builder continues to work the punch list items. Also, we discussed the food service contract, much like the transportation contract. Ms. Macedo brought forward the need to go out to bid for a food service contract that is coming to, our current contract is coming to an end. So Madam Chair, in the form of a motion to authorize the Director of Business Services to publish bid specifications to award a five-year food service contract.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Marrera. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Are there protections like we're going to have in the bussing contract for us in the food service contract?
Actually, the food service contract bid specifications are coming directly from Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They're very stringent and include all of the nutrition items that have to be in the contract. So we have to follow that process.
And were the vendor not informed and we have any recalls against them? That's my question.
Yes, there are going to be the same types of things in any bid that you do. You need to have in there termination clauses, you know.
You can get back.
Performance and so on.
Like with the transportation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Marrera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Madam Chair, the next item on the agenda was the proctor salary, and at this point in the budget subcommittee report, I'm going to turn the, turn it over to you and recuse myself, as I did during the budget subcommittee meeting on Monday, as my wife is a proctor in the district, and will turn to continue my report once the committee has completed its deliberations.
Okay, after Mr. Dolan left the room, I did lead the discussion on proctor salaries. Raises have been given to the teachers, to nurses, secretaries, maintenance, custodians, grounds, and educational support personnel, but we have not discussed the proctors. They are a non-union entity and have been overlooked for years. In the district, we have 25 proctors who have, who work six-hour days and have a half hour for lunch with no prep, and they serve in several capacities, classroom coverage, library, computers, and they have assigned duties as well. Presently, they are being paid $125.15 per day. Their last increase was in September of 2015. They work 196 days, giving them an annual salary of $25,529.40. The budget subcommittee felt a 2% raise beginning January 1st, 2023, would be in order, as it aligns with other increases in pay across the district. After conferring with Mrs. Macedo, it was confirmed that we have money in this year's budget to cover the increase, and it would be sustainable going forward. Proctor pay would be reevaluated again prior to June 30th, 2023, for the fiscal year. At a 2% increase, the daily amount would increase to $127.65, giving a yearly total of $25,019.40. This is a difference of $490 per person. With 25 people, it would be an additional cost of $12,250 annually. It was also suggested that moving forward, the budget subcommittee would look at, would take a look at putting together some type of a scale that the proctors would have based on their years of experience. So I will entertain a motion to increase the proctor salaries to $127.65 per day. We have a motion by Mrs. Martelli, we have a second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. Any discussion?
I'd just like to put that in perspective, because I always like to put things in perspective for folks. The total raise across all of the proctors that we've just approved is basically half a proctor. That's $12,000 out of 25, so it's certainly with the budget, as Ms. Macedo says, certainly since 2015, if you haven't gotten a raise, you probably deserve a little bit of something. So I'm in favor of it.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Should we make a motion to take new business B out of order, so we don't have to make Mr. Dolan get up again?
I'm sorry?
The payroll warrant?
Payroll warrant.
Oh.
Might as well.
11B?
Oh, 11B out of order?
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Okay, yes.
I'm not good.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Fitzgibbons to take 11B out of order.
Second.
And we have a second by Mr. Marrera. Okay, the payroll warrants. Let me just find them now, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Sorry to mess up your schedule.
Yeah, well, you know, we'll have a talk about it later. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the payroll warrants dated November 17th, 2022, and December 23rd, December 3rd, 2022.
So, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Marrera, second by Mrs. King. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Six in favor. Okay.
All right. Then on the agenda, we covered FY '23 budget. We continue to review the budget on a monthly basis. And as a reminder, we have a budget freeze in place as of October 1st. We remain in good financial, a good financial place at this time. We are watching the electrical and heating lines as we come into the winter months, and we all know how cold it's been. Mr. Powers and Ms. Macedo informed the subcommittee that they will be returning Mr. Powers and Ms. Macedo informed the Subcommittee that they will be returning $467,800 of capital funds to the Town of Bridgewater. Mr. Powers explained that there was a procedural issue on the Town of Bridgewater's end, and that ultimately, the money will be returned back to the district after the proper votes by the Bridgewater Town Council have been taken. And then finally, Madam Chair, FY24 budget timeline and preliminary discussion. Again, Mr. Powers and Ms. Macedo met with both towns over the last couple of weeks to discuss the FY24 needs. Both towns are looking at a potential concern, actually, with the FY25 budget, and want to make sure that whatever we put in the FY24 budget will be sustainable in FY25. The committee discussed several positions that have been requested for by the principals and other departments as well, and that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Next on our agenda, we have community liaisons. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thank you. I hear from people throughout the month, and try to hold enough sour right before our meeting, so folks can come in and speak with me. One of the things I heard about, and if I may, with your indulgence, talk about, because it continues to be an area of concern, and Mr. Marrera's gonna report on it next, but given that it's the anniversary of the new town shooting, if we could just take a moment of silence to remember them? Thank you. So obviously, that remains a concern that I hear from people a lot. I did have a few people reach out around special education concerns, and making sure that the district is following all the guidelines and everything like that, and I think that's one I can just give to the acting superintendent and let him, you know, understand the issues behind that, but obviously, what I tell people is, just like in my real job where they pay me, the first thing we have to do is follow the law. So, and I'm sure we are, I just wanna make sure that we can document it, and they're followed up with it. And then lastly, a nice thing, Mr. Paul LaPorte, who's the VFW Auxiliary Leader in Bridgewater, down on Hart Street, reached out to talk about the essay scholarship competitions they have for schools at the VFW, for grade six through 12, and art and singing competitions as well for scholarships for K to 12, and wanted to try to make a connection into the district. So again, I'll pass that on to the acting superintendent and see if we can make a connection. I know I spoke with Mr. Marrera, who's been very active in the VFW over time, and he said, you know, it's something that we've tried to do over time, but if we can kick start something, that would be great.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll just touch on it really quickly. I was the former post commander of the VFW, Post 2125 in Bridgewater and Hart Street. Every year, the VFW as a whole, across the country, has essay competitions for Patriots of Penn, for children at the junior high level, at the middle school level, and then they have one at the high school level every year as well. The charter for the Bridgewater VFW encompasses all three Bridgewaters, Bridgewater East and West, and those essay competitions slash scholarships do go out to all of those high schools. In those high schools, there is a first place, second place, and third place, so a total of nine different places between the three high schools. Bridgewater-Ranham has underperformed over the years, to the point that if just three people would submit for Bridgewater-Ranham, three essays that meet the eligibility criteria, all three would win at one place or another, first, second, or third. We're not even getting those entries. I know at some schools in the other towns, some of the teachers make that as part of an extra credit activity for their classrooms, so you have a lot of participation at some of those schools. There was a contact here years ago that was engaging the students. That contact has since retired, probably about five, six years back, and since then, we have seen that lapse in commitment to try to get kids to do these essays and be judged and part of this content. So I think Mr. LaPorte's inquiry to Mr. Fitzgibbons was to see if we can get the district back re-engaged in these. Essays are due November 1st, or they're around about every year, and they're judged, and they go out for award around December. So next year, once the school year starts, those essays will go out, and they're actually going... They actually go out as of January on the VFW site, the national website for their scholarships. The VFW itself usually doesn't bring them to the schools until around the start of school, because if you bring them to them in May or June, kids are only thinking about the summertime, they're not thinking about doing an essay. So I know Mr. LaPorte will probably be around the schools again in early September when school starts to be getting those essay applications out, if students are interested.
Thank you.
That's my report.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Mrs. Pabner, how's it going?
I'll just say one thing, and I know I talk about this a lot, is, and Mr. Fitzgibbons said a little bit, and part of it has to do with my connection to families, my own personal experience, and I continue to hear from special education families around concerns. I know Mr. Joblos is addressing some of those, and I know there is a district review coming up in February, and those surveys have gone out to families from DSE around that review, but it is something I think we should be aware of and be thinking about.
Right, anyone else? Okay, thank you very much for your report. Next on the agenda, we have safety and security updates. Mr. Marrera?
Madam Chair, the Safety and Security Group had its second meeting in the school year on December 2nd, 2022, at 9:30 AM in Superintendent's Conference Room at Central Office. Those present included administrators from all schools, facilities, Central Office, Police and Fire from both communities, including the Town SROs and Lucini Bus Company. Fire and Alice drills were ongoing throughout the first couple of months of the school year. All drills went well, and continued Alice training. The older ages are being done at the classroom level with student discussions, talking about scenarios, and having more adult discussions with the students at the high school. The group also discussed the new Mitchell School safety features and how they had a programming glitch. One of the new procedures for indicating shelter in place was inadvertently activated by a staff. Although the procedure did work, the actual automated verbal announcement stated Alice instead of shelter in place. As you can imagine, this created a chaotic scene for staff and students. As programmed, the system automatically alerted the police and fire officials, who responded accordingly, which has since been corrected. There's also continued discussions about additional cameras throughout the district. Those discussions are ongoing. And in closing, I'd just like to remind the public that specific building security measures and procedures will not be disclosed to the public as they... As not to jeopardize the safety and well-being of our students and staff. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Marrera. Okay, next on the agenda, we have health and wellness update. Mrs. Brennan?
I'm Madam Chair, Lieutenant Powers, members of the school committee, happy holidays. Congratulations, Tola. She keeps me on track with my grants, my budget. Health and wellness. So we just met with Bridging Lives again this past week. Kind of exciting things going on now. As you may or may not remember, we moved Esper down to grade into grade seven, both middle schools. Bridging Lives took that cue, and they're doing a student mentorship program in fifth grade of both towns, so they have students from high school going to the fifth grades in both of those locations. Kind of a topic of the month, if you will. So the next one in January is pointing more on mental health, and how important it is, equally important for physical health, followed by saying no, meaning it, keeping your self-possessed stand on not being bullied or talked into or out of things. So they're doing a good job, and the kids really like doing it, so it's working out well. My Narcan is aging out in February. They promised to help me with the Narcan in each school, gifting us with the 14 Narcan. Little grants, we scored with Lowe's for buckets towards our preparedness. Every classroom will now have a go bucket, if you will, so Lowe's gifted us with the 500 buckets, 500 lids, 500 rolls of tape, 500... I had asked for the hammers with the little round pot thing, or something, I think, ball thing, I think, you know? But instead, they went with the claws, sharp claws, big, heavy, sharp claws, but they said it was important to jam it in the door, if you put it just right in the door, the door can't be accessed. So they seem to know, you know, quite a bit about what we were doing with our buckets. So, you know, much appreciation to Lowe's and Ranham for the buckets. Additionally, we've met with both fire departments, Ranham and Bridgewater. They were great. The chief from Ranham came over, and they had recommendations, and it's good to get current and updated. Our evacuation methods were a bit outdated. We had an evacuation chair. We had a clunky kind of a metal-framed bed, if you will, type thing, and one of our nurses, Kathy Smith, was evacuated on this metal-framed thing down a staircase, and she said it was the most uncomfortable, creepiest thing she'd ever done, so. And in that evacuation, of course, one of the adult staff members had a shoulder thing, and we knew it wasn't the best, but for the times, that's what we had. So the chief explained to us that a lot of that has changed, and we use what's called Mega Movers now, and it's a tarp-esque type of thing with loops down all sides, and it kind of cocooned the person in it and dropped out of there. So it's safer for the carrying staff, it's safer for the person in it. So we immediately, the department purchased several Mega Movers there in every school. There's at least one in the nurse's office, and then known disabled students somewhere in the vicinity of where they are in the classroom or wing of that building. And they didn't just make, you know, these recommendations. The chief had an EMS person just come in last week with 10 tourniquets and 10 more Mega Movers, so now we're up to about three or four in every school, pretty well equipped along the lines of preparedness. They want more tourniquets. So right now, there's a tourniquet in every, what we term commonplace AED, that AED in the lobbies near the gym-type cafeteria areas, that now has not just the AED, but the Narcan has a tourniquet as well. Someday, maybe we build the tourniquet in every bucket, who knows? Something to shoot for. My little grant, I think, I think I know I talk to no one, so I just scored a truckload of Lysol wipes, but I will need a forklift and a lot of help with that. Performance measures is where we left off in August, so we've made a lot of progress in that area. We're working collaboratively, closely with the building site administration to work on chronic absenteeism. We had the same pandemic everyone else had, but our absenteeism was up there. I think I sent you a little big work with our numbers. The gist of it is, there's a lot of time, resources, and interventions being put into this, not just nursing alone, I mean, it's a collaborative. Building admin is working with us, school site guidance is working with us. There isn't every few days that I don't happen to update a manager, Ms. Cohen, it's for all her numbers. It's a daunting project that has a lot of value in it. Dr. Kern, you know, we just talked to him this morning, and our health advisory council, whatever he can do to help, he said. So even the pediatricians need to buy in. We can't just have the obscure rubber-stamped notes excusing the absences. Sometimes a gentle reminder every swap into the practitioners that you really can't excuse people from the law, to the laws, you have to come to school. We're trying to balance all that with the fact that we are also seeing a surge in flu. We have flu right now, and as you know, we have a medically fragile population, and we just want some consideration toward them. It's been addressed a couple of times. Mr. Powers, thank you for sending out a couple notifications to the fact that if you have... Your child has known symptoms, please don't send them to school, you know? Please don't do the Tylenol thing and send them out the door. Again, medically fragile population, we worry about. In fact, we had one very ill, went home today. Good news was, he went home today from the hospital, so, you know, we just like some consideration toward them. So as you can see from the interventions, it ranges everywhere from, we start out tracking, and then we up, you know, the anti with interventions appropriate for what we see as a trend, from parent contact, school site contact, and, you know, the last intervention's, of course, contacting the primary care to let them know that we've now assigned this status of chronic absenteeism to the child, a status that's suboptimal. You know, it comes with, it's impactful, social, emotional, and not to mention academic impact and ramifications, so we don't like to see it. And its numbers, we hope to improve. DSE has brought to attention of admin, Department of Public Health has brought to our, you know, attention, so collaboratively, we're working on it. We hope to bring it down by the 3% as assigned by both agencies. Another performance measures that we're ongoingly tackling is the ELO Food and Housing Assessment. Each of the identified members of the population meet with an RN, and a letter goes home to the parents to discuss the assessment. Social-emotional status update. As you can see, SOS has occurred in both middle schools, grade eight, and half of the high schools' grade 10 population. The numbers, high school sadly went up in many categories. The two middle schools, relatively steady. We were warned, you know, through health agencies and whatnot, that we want to see some outfall in this area on a day-to-day, because you see from the emotional visits to the school nurse, that the population out there has some needs. We work closely with our guidance councils, our school site, and I'm delighted to be working with Ms. Rose, our new social-emotional running department head. She's working hard to bridge some of our collaboration. And last but not least, our wellness policy is moving forward. We've met August, October, we meet again in January, we... The district's WellSat score on the Red Center has been performed, again, a collaborative effort with Mr. O'Connell from our Health and Wellness, Eric from our Food Services. You know, again, lots of people present, teachers with their input, and together, we're working through it. We have a DSE-assigned coach who promises we will have it rewritten and presented to you by the spring. Overall, like I said, we have some flu. Our Ranham Elementary School kind of triggered a DSE cluster event, they call it. Our numbers were such that we had a 28% absence at Merrill, 23% at the Liberty, and so the file remains open for 14 days or so. We're into our second week at this point. Our numbers, not that we're not improving, but we've seen a shift in the population. We now have the middle school more so than the elementary school, so our numbers have remained steady, and we'll see this with buses and siblings and families. Primarily influenza A, they are aware of it. Our numbers are, they're vague at best. What's happening is, and you may have experienced this, you bring a child to the pediatrician, if you're invited to do so, and they won't test it, it's like, oh, it's the flu, continue doing what you're doing, or they may say to you on the phone, don't come, please don't. So categorically, we can't catalog... So categorically, we can't catalog those numbers unless we have a test confirming it or a clinical diagnosis. So a lot of what we're seeing right now is flu-like illness, high temps, 103, they're sick, and it's a good week, five to seven days. And, question?
Madam Chair, I could, Ms. Brennan, you mentioned that your Narcan is going to expire in February, and that they were going to help you get more. Was the day bridging line?
Correct.
Okay, I just wasn't one of the...
Right, they do ask that we do an administration training video, which is not a problem, the nurses are doing those as we speak, and once we send that back at the end of the video or whatever, you know, and they're comfortable with the fact that we administer it, they gave it last time, like, got them some hope, so, cap and reductions.
Awesome. Madam Chair, during COVID, we purchased those sprayers, and I'm wondering if they haven't come out of the shelf?
If it's... Yes, we are. We instituted that maybe a week or two ago.
Yes.
When the numbers started to tick up, that we asked all of our head custodians to orchestrate that at night, like the building, to be free again.
Right, I'm sorry, I neglected to mention that. Nightly fogging has been occurring since we talked, and disinfecting frequent contact surfaces, the doorknobs, different parental surfaces. Lysol wipes, Tom. A whole truckload.
This is, it's early.
It is early. That's correct. Our peak is February to March in this area normally, but there was some anticipation that with the mask-wearing of the last couple of years, that our immune systems became uneducated, if you will, that they needed to re-acclimate to these sort of exposures, and that may be what we're seeing as soon as the windows start closing, as soon as... So some of those mitigating strategies were urging return to the classroom, like, crack the window just a little bit, just an ever-so-small amount, disinfect what you can. Tom has been great about the fogging nightly, emphasizing from an educational perspective that hand hygiene, you know, it should never have fallen by the way, so I'm just always going to... And then, you know, if you have symptoms, please don't, don't say, "We're going to send you."
And one last question, Madam Chair. You mentioned, Ms. Brennan, reporting numbers of flu cases. If a parent has a student at home who has been tested positive by their primary care physician, how do you expect to get that information?
We often will receive phone calls, and it'll be a discussion at that point where we ask them to send in the documentation.
Okay.
And as soon as they send that in, then we immediately put it into their record as a condition and alert for that date, and, you know, it gets counted.
Mrs. Brennan, I'm just curious on the wellness policy. I know there's been some emails or just some questions about that wellness policy, or in the updating, is there an opportunity or will there be an opportunity for parents or even students to comment on that policy before it comes to us?
Now, one of the categories we were not... Was our parent input part, so that's a design revision at this point. A lot of, so the federal and state noncompliance issues that they had with it were more or less formalities, things like our pre-reduced lunch program has to be on the website, it has to be mentioned in our policy, it wasn't mentioned in our policy. So it's a lot of things like that. Staff, addressing staff wellness was not addressed in our current policy, and the need to model, how we model it was not clearly identified in our current policy. So it's things like that that are being looked at.
Madam Chair, if I may, just, I want to want, just to thank Ms. Brennan and her staff
for all they're doing. I know she mentioned some mitigation strategies in terms of trying to lower the absenteeism rate, just to share a small rumor, Popeye maybe shared some early numbers with us. The way it gets reported is through the school year, so this is not necessarily apples to apples, because we're only halfway through, but looking at last year for the district, we were at about 22% chronic absenteeism on the report. We're currently at 5.2, so we have reduced the amount of students at this point being designated as chronically absent, but obviously, we know we're in this flu season, and so that number could fluctuate as the year goes on, but there is a glimmer of hope in terms of reducing that number. So thank you for all you're putting in place, and Mr. Kilgore for the mitigation strategies. And second, just to thank again publicly Lowe's, it really was such a generous offer from them. If anybody wants to get the Lowe's video, security video is quite the comedy scene trying to get these loaded into the trucks, so I can't thank Mr. Kilgore and his department enough, but Ms. Brennan was there. Mrs. Barry, Mrs. Sederowitz came over as well, and we all put our collective hands together and worked with Lowe's to get them loaded onto the truck, and they are in district, and we're just trying to finalize a plan to how do we get these all out to all the classrooms, so it was very generous again, so I just want to thank Lowe's. And I know Mrs. Sederowitz, when she didn't tweet that out, she also tapped Lowe's and got a response from them, so they're aware that we were sharing that.
Spatial geometry was never my forte, but envisioning transporting 500 buckets was rather obscure to me, so I turfed that to Tom, and it turned out it wasn't one truck, it was three trucks. And then the way they were tied off, just envisioning all these blue buckets down.
All while the fire line was going up at Lowe's too.
We had to evacuate and interrupt this process, but we eventually got it done. Thank you, Tom.
I know there's been question, I mean, similar, I won't say similar, it's different than last year because of COVID or whatever, but there is flu-like symptoms, and kids are out, there's been an increase earlier than normal. There has been some questions, and there's, at the beginning of the year, there was a lot of questions about absenteeism and approved absenteeism versus what's not approved, and all of that piece. There are families that have gotten letters saying your student is absent. At what point does that letter get issued from the district? Because that's the thing, is like, if the kid's out sick, you're getting a letter, and so it makes me, a parent feel anxious.
So early on, prior to the flu, we were really trying to buckle down, try to shift to, during the pandemic, COVID was on, I was pushing the quarantines and, you know, encouraging people to stay out. We now have to kind of backtrack, backpedal, and shift that whole way of thinking. So early on, most building principals do a five-absence letter, 10, increments of five for the most part. The elementary school is a little bit more with the room, obviously, so the 10% mark right now, I believe most people are going by six, six or more right now.
So various schools?
But Dennis did go more with an eight, yeah, so there's a little bit...
But what the principals are doing for the most part, but certainly the parents are concerned, maybe that call hasn't gone out. They're proactively reaching out to the parent to say, listen, I know you were out with flu, I know you were with COVID, but I have, you know, might have to send this letter. And, you know, don't worry about it.
In the end, I think a lot of things are factored in, and it's looked at more, just, you know, with a careful eye than the black and white number. I mean, I just learned this week from Meg that if there's tutoring in place, that's erased, that's taken off the tally. If you're doing tutoring on that day, then you weren't absent, whether you were absent or not. So, I mean, there's a lot that goes into it, and we're trying to balance, like you said, we're trying to recognize that there is flu. One principal was concerned early on, before we even started surging, and she, you know, she... So what helps is they're collaborating in a form of holding child study teams in most of buildings, and that's a good thing. And over at La Liberty, she's actually increased it from once a month to once every other week because she saw her numbers increasing and became concerned. She was seeing actually vacations. That became concerning.
Right, thank you, Mrs. Brennan, for your follow-up data and for putting strategies and those interventions in place, and it was nice to see that number going down. I know flu cases were going for that 3%. Next on our agenda is new business and DEI coordinator equity statement, Ms. Barrios.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school committee members, and acting Superintendent Powers. It is my pleasure and really my honor to present to you our equity statement crafted by our DEI Advisory Committee, which is a collection of community members, both with students in the district and who do not have students in the district, family members, students, staff, and administrators. Our equity statement reads as follows. The Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District will remain steadfast in its pursuit of creating and maintaining an environment where all community members are able to be their full and most authentic selves and feel a profound sense of belonging. The district commits itself to lifelong learning, recognizing that true diversity and equity work is continuous and requires an ongoing commitment of our professional and personal development, resources, and time. In addition to this statement, we did take a lot of note from the work that Newton Public Schools did, more particularly their race and achievement leadership team. They put together a list of action items and really a statement that said, because we believe in, the district commits itself to. And those are four different prompts that we've listed as a group, and you are going to be able to see as this document's going to live on our DEI page on our main website. But this equity statement is really going to be the framework for the DEI work moving forward. When I came into this district, we didn't have anything like this. Our vision and mission statement alludes to the fact that we are a community for all students, but we really felt that it was important that we created something that lived on, we thought it was important that we showcased where the shared responsibility is to continue this work moving forward. And I'm presenting it to you with that same mindset, that we share this responsibility together, especially as we're going into this new budget cycle, and you all are going to be doing your own DEI work this year, just really honing it in and committing ourselves to looking at how our goals and decisions moving forward affect our students and continue to move this work forward.
Anyone from the committee have any questions? Seeing none, do we need to make a motion on this? Are we taking this as an action item, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion for the purposes of discussion to approve the equity statement as put forth by Ms. Barrios.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Marrera, second by Mr. Spitzgibbons, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Barrios. And we've done our approval of the warrants, payroll warrants. We do not have anyone from the public here, so we will skip that section of the meeting. Announcements, does anyone from this committee have any announcements? Okay. If any...
If I just might, and I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I do want to remind our friends on the Bridgewater side, there is a special town election on January 7th, so please feel free to get out and vote, and vote for the best candidates if you can.
If any school committee member has anything that they would like to have considered for the agenda for our next meeting, please email either myself or Ms. Dougal. On behalf of the school committee, I would like to wish everyone a happy holiday season and a happy, healthy, and peaceful new year. Our next school committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January 25th, 2022, 2023, sorry about that, in the library of the Rainham Middle School. This concludes our regular school committee meeting. I will entertain a motion to adjourn on December 14th, 2022, school meeting at 8:53.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Marrera, second by Mr. Spitzgibbons, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion...